One thousand and then just some upcoming items that you will be seeing in the future. You will have an ambulance that's a replacement from 2014. You will see that in this year's budget. Eventually, I'm not saying you need it now, but eventually you will need a brush truck. We're in line hopefully to receive a grant in the future, but it is something to consider. Police radios, one point two million to one point six. For those of you that don't know, a few years ago, the city of Leon Valley was on its own radio system. And that by itself was very problematic. We couldn't really call for mutual aid. We had some disconnect with San Antonio and Fairbanks County. And so ACOG got together and said, hey, all suburban cities, we'd really like y'all to be all on the same radio system. It was Officer Safety, y'all are too small to kind of be really on your own. And so we upgraded our system to what everybody else is using. Well, that system happened seven years ago, and so they're gearing up to either go to either Marola or a different radio system, and so we have to follow suit with them too. I'm hoping, because the county helped us last time, that the county will help us with this price tag. However, this is the current price tag. And if we don't get any help, this is the money you're going to have to come up with in order to fund that radio, funding new radios. Fire department assessment report. We had some areas in the fire department that had some cracking, had some water damage. And so it's roughly, depending on what we're going to do with the fire department, it could cost you about thirty-four thousand just to get some of those things done there. We just need a Chevy replacement, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. A farm tractor as a replacement from 2003, a generator from 2017, and a water truck that will be a replacement for 2010. And then we'll have an asphalt distributor that will, uh, 2017, that will be replaced in 27. The other thing that came up is a staff utilization report. So back, probably almost a, not a year ago, oh, about a year ago. The council budgeted about seventy-five thousand dollars for a third party to come in and give us an assessment to determine whether or not we needed more police, fire, and public works, basically. And the report did come out, it's online, it's on our homepage. But essentially, they said we needed two more police officers, a full-time, another full-time detective, at least three firefighters, public works needed, one more park person, one more fleet person, and to take a look at succession planning. So unfortunately, we're really small here. And so Melinda, for those of you that don't know, is getting ready to retire in 2026. Her backup, of course, is Dave Demoline, who you saw here this evening. But we have departments like planning and zoning. When we lost our planning and zoning director, we didn't have somebody to fill that role. And so you have myself and Melinda and Roque jumping in to kind of fill that role. You really should be set up to have assistant directors in a lot of your departments, which you currently don't have. And so it's vital for y'all's future to make sure that you don't have a decrease in those services. And so Melinda won't be here forever between her and me, because we've been here for so long. We kind of jump into those roles and we've been filling them while we have those vacancies. Me and Melinda won't be here forever, and so y'all really should be planning on taking a look at assistant directors in your planning and zoning department, maybe taking a look at your municipal court in the future as that gets bigger. Some funding options, taking a look at bonds, increasing taxes, of course grants. There's some low-interest loans for your water, or you just don't fund those items. I mean, there's always an option to say, hey, we don't, we don't need the bore, we don't need the, you know, police or fire, we're fine with what we have. You can also, you can certainly say, you know, we don't need an animal care facility at this moment, we can't afford it, and so you do have that option. And so this is just breakdown, people always ask what bonds are and how they impact. And so this is a slide on the types of bonds we can issue. And that concludes my presentation. I am going to open up Mentimeter for y'all to break those projects of priority. Again, if you're not going to respond, you don't have to, they should be up online.
Are there any questions on the needs that were presented during this presentation? Yes, sir, in the back. If you could stand up and it'd be great to say. Without a microphone and your name and just where, where do you generally reside, in Leon Valley? Sun Street, okay.
Evening Sun Street.
Evening Sun, okay, great, thank you.
Just two questions, basically. First one regarding the fire brush truck, so that's one thing. Would you, would you be adding personnel, or do you need specs, you know, people who are specifically trained to run the fire brush truck and cleaning brush? So is there personnel dedicated to the truck?
Okay.
And then the other question, regarding the skate park, liability, if we consider it? And does that also affect our future insurance from another insurer in the future? If we have that liability of skate park?
Thank you.
So as far as the fire department brush truck that ran by the firefighters, the brush truck, essentially what it does, it allows us to get into like areas like the natural area. If there's a fire in there, our big fire truck can't get into the middle of the natural area. And so it's a way for us to mitigate smaller fires in the middle of vacant lands and locations to maneuver. There are some areas that the fire truck can't get into. Right now, they're having a hard time getting into Montirobras because the trees are overhanging and basically our truck can't get through without damaging the fire truck. And so those brush trucks help us be able to get to those smaller fires if we need it to. Now, the truck's really big and won't go through and put out a house fire, you know. But at the same time, you're going to be causing damage to your fire truck. So this is a slight reminder to cut your trees. The second thing is the liability, yes. Skate park does increase our insurance liability, not by a lot, but I have to look at the new rates for it. So don't quote me on this, but the last time we looked, we, it was like a five thousand dollar increase to a skate park.
My question. Hi Heather.
How are you?
Seneca State. I, my question regarding employees, personnel that we need. Is that not something that the red light camera revenue can fund?
So your red light cameras are getting ready to end in 2037. And so the goal for the council is to, yeah, so you have a total of six people in there, so you could fund it temporarily. The problem that we're having now is we're looking into the future and you don't have the general fund monies to support the people that are currently even in there right now. And so we're trying to year by year move your red light camera people out of the red light camera fund. Because if we just cut it off and they decide to get rid of the red light cameras, you couldn't fund those officers, and so you would be going down at minimum of six people. Not to mention, you do have like a court clerk person that's paid out of there. And so year by year, we're trying to pull people out, so in 2037, you're not hit with one big, two million dollar trash.
Anybody else, did you have a question?
Yes, with regard to streets. I live over in Seneca too, and they're building those new houses back there. I guess you're pulling a bunch of brush up. I sat down one morning in the front of my house, and that truck, that huge, great big truck, thirty passes. What is going to happen to grassed truck? I don't know, so also driving on Seneca, but they're ruined, or we're gonna ruin whatever, all that weight, as often as it is, and that was just one hour of one day. Because I hear them rumbling, rumbling, rumbling down the street all the time. So, but my suggestion is to avoid the city paying for that, is isn't there some kind of tax of some sort that you can put on the builder and say, you know what, you're going up and down these roads? And I know it's part of the cost of construction, but let them bear the cost, and not city Leon Valley or the citizens. Because it really is, it was enough to be noticed while watching TV. And it's every day, every weekday. And then the other question is, is, I don't use the H and B, I just walk on streets, or I go to a friend's house and walk on those streets. Does the patronage of the one that already exists support extending it? Because if it's not being used much, why continue it?
So I'm going to have Melinda answer the street question to my phone friend.
I can actually answer both for you. So we've contacted the construction company that's doing the Seneca West project, and we've asked them to only use Grass Hill and William Rancher. They are using Seneca as well. But right now, they're going down A Street, which is going to tear that road completely up. So he's going to move the trucks to Grass Hill. Grass Hill was built to withstand big trucks, it's a sixty-foot wide roadway for that reason. Any damage that they cause to our roadways, they will be required to repair. They are also going to be reconstructing William Rancher, the entire street. We're actually giving them an easement right now for that purpose. So they'll be going in after they get that construction done and redo that roadway.
But usually when roads are paved that over, they are never up to the standard of what they were, hard and damaged and cracked and, but you can come start looking at Grass Hill.
We have.
I mean, I can tell you different, and it's not like I'm a street watcher, but I wonder about that.
So basically, the roadway, you've got your base material, and then you've got a two-inch overlay on it. I believe Grass Hill has four-inch overlay on it, we'll have to go check that to make sure. But once they're done, if there's any damage to the base, we would do some spot base repairs and also do a milling overlay on the roadway.
And maybe you'll find your route, sometimes it's going to take time for the problem to show up.
We'll, we'll deal with it when we get there. But there's no tax that we can do on them for the use of the roads, any kind of fee. There's no way we can do that to them. We can make them repair roadways that they are responsible for, so that's what the plan is. But meanwhile, I've asked the construction people to limit their use of that neighborhood, because we also had a report of somebody going down Mary Jamison. And if you're on Mary Jamison, you know that there are cars parked on both sides of that street all the time. You get the huge trucks going through, and it's taking out limbs or anything else. So we are, you know, we're on it, hopefully Monday morning they have the construction signs up that say, use Grass Hill. The second question to the. The second question about the hike and bike, yes, it's used regularly, people are loving it. And so we're excited.
Hi, do you?
Anything else?
Melinda, did you answer the trails question? Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll get at your.
I have another question. Another question on the library annex. Can you explain the purpose, use, and do we need it, and why even consider?
Yeah, so that, so the big thing today, the slide you're going to see is me asking you to prioritize. The library annex is used for the friends of the library, they stole, they store, sorry, old books or books that aren't utilized, or maybe like an overdonation of books, and then they have a book sale. And then those sales go to the friends, and the friends is a 401(c)(3), and they do things for the library. They, they provide them with certain services for programming. We needed like 3D printing or a new printer, they helped pay for that. They pay for furniture in the library, and so those funds are very important. They help supplement your general fund budget. But the book sales is what supports those funds. Now, there's lots of questions on whether or not there's enough funds raised by the friends from those book sales to continue to support the library annex or not. And so again, this is why I'm asking y'all, and you, you'll have a list, you'll be able to prioritize right now as we move through these slides. And I just want to know what's most important to y'all as a community. So we know as directors, because you know, like as was mentioned, I don't live here, but I work here. And I'm probably here more than I am at home. And so, but it is still your community, and it's up to you to tell the staff and to tell the elected officials, what is a priority for you. And so that's what we're going to do here with the questions.
The annual revenue from the book sales.
I don't know what it is, does anybody here know the annual? Regina, where are you at?
Over there.
Regina, phone friend, oh, annual revenue for the books.
Well, you had, they said fourteen thousand.
I had fourteen thousand.
Well, that wasn't for the sales, that's just what they gave to the library last year. But that, those monies come from the sales and the books. And they do other, they do the purpose with Santa, and they have other fundraising, but I know a lot of the money comes from the sales and the books.
I just, I just want to mention that if you haven't gone to the library sale the first Saturday of every month, and you like to read, you will never, because I have been to the San Antonio libraries when they have their sales. You will never find books sold as cheaply as in that annex. And they have everything, and the people who volunteer in there know what they have. If you want to get a new, a book for a gift, and some of them are new, so don't. You know, that's a wonderful resource, and it sure is cheaper than half a price book or any other book sale that you're going to run across.
And is there a restriction or limitation on the price of books down there?
Nope. They take everything.
Oh, there's Marianne, let Marianne.
We take any kind of book that is in good condition. We take fiction, nonfiction, paperback, hardback, okay? And as Judy says, if you want.
Under the speaker.
If you want to buy books at a reasonable price and help the library, the annex is the place to come. We have our sales the first Saturday of every month, nine-thirty to twelve. Coming up, not, well, February will be February first, so that will be the next sale. And then we will have a three-day sale, February twenty-ninth and March first. And February twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, is a Friday, and that will run from nine to six. And then Saturday again will be nine-thirty to twelve. Come and see what we do, because it really does make a difference, it does help the library. We have purchased furniture for them, we've purchased extra books, we fund some of the summer reading programs that cannot exceed their budget. So come visit, we have children's books, we have dope books, we have gardening, you name it, we have.
And I think that's a lot better option for us to help our city. The last time I brought books to Half-Christ, new books, new CDs, new DVDs, three boxes like coq de paper comes in, I didn't even get enough to buy an eleven-dollar book, and I thought, I'm not doing this again. I'd rather donate to the city, but get nothing and let it help the city. It is no longer in my opinion useful to bring that much, and I didn't bring credit with them. I brought good books packets, which were hardbacks.
Great, thank you.
So bring them our way.
Scratch out and Mr. Hoyt.
I just want to counter the plug for the library annex. I hate to rain on everybody's parade, it's so great, we give money to the library, I get that. But we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars to build an annex that donates fourteen thousand dollars a year to the library. Do the math. That's over twenty years of spending to give fourteen thousand to the library. Wouldn't we rather just give the money to the library, fund it, rather than, and over time, than continue to have this annex sitting there? It's kind of an eyesore, I'm not going to say kind of, it is an eyesore, right there by the park. And it's been brought up in council, Council Martinez actually had the idea of, and I don't want to, it was his idea, but it was Danny Rodriguez's citizen that wants to build a memorial for the veterans, armed services, all the armed services. And Benny actually had the idea of remove, because that's city property, move the annex and let's put a veteran's memorial there, and not funded by taxpayers. The idea is to go out to businesses and Sierra, NAPID, and other HEB, and get donations to build that at no cost to the city. And you know, it's very visible, people go by, respect our veterans, our service, and it's something we would see all the time, especially, you know, Fourth of July is a big neck here. So that's another idea. It's not on the slide tonight, but I'm just giving other options.
Mr. Hoyt is next, John Hoyt.
I'm actually, can I, can he ask his question? Sorry, I'm already over here.
Okay, yes, sir, go ahead. And then Mr. Hoyt.
All right, so thank you very much, everybody. I'm glad I asked the question, because now I have more insight as to what is involved with library annex. And I would propose that the city look into making space for them in the existing buildings that we have right now as creative center, that building right across there. Let's give them some space in there. I mean, instead of building something else, look them in, put some cost into that, and you wouldn't be spending three hundred thousand dollars for a different building. Just open in someplace else, make use of the city's space that's not being used. I mean, how often is this room being used?
Every weekend.
Every weekend?
Every weekend.
The whole space?
Both spaces. Yep, and then you need the rental revenue, what generates in order to continue with your hotel multi-tax.
And how does that compare to the three hundred thousand we need to put in?
A lot, a lot, it compares a lot. And so we looked at, the other, the other option that we looked at was enclosing a part of the patio at the current library and making the friends a space there at the current library. We don't have space in the current library, there are out of space already as it is. But we were looking at enclosing a portion of the library where the patio is to the right, and moving them in that section. So that's, that's also an option.
Okay, Mr. Hoyt.
Thank you, morning, my name is John Hoyt, I'm from Livingston, Fort Stokes. I'm a big fan of the natural area. And that natural area erosion issue, that's, there's so many aspects to that, so the city could proceed with caution there. But you know, the drainage work that was done for the Van Derr Road Bridge on down has dropped the baseline of that stream, and has resulted in a lot of that erosion there next to Triangle Park. So you're really interested to see what, how SAWS can help with that. You know, their wastewater line, whatever that is, splopping the creek. So that would be really interesting to see how SAWS can resolve some of these uses, I think, of cause. As far as proceeding with a plan, I would be willing to be real cognizant of those five-hundred-year oaks. There's at least four of them I can think of in there, it would be tragic to lose those. And then also a big priority would be to protect the historic property, use that cinder onion, you know, all those things can kind of move forward in concert, thank you.
I appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to go on to the.
Prioritizing.
So if they're going to get out their.
Get out your phone, it should say prioritizing right now on your screen. It should say prioritizing, prioritizing, I'm looking, people are on it. She's saying, I'll do it, all right, I'm going to go with first question. So I need you to rank one to twelve. So the system only let me set up twelve rankings, so I had to merge a couple of items together. They will be separated in upcoming slides, so just do the best you can. The way you rank is you're going to drag up your first one, then you're going to drag up your second one, and then you're going to drag up your third one. And so we can kind of see what your priorities are going to be as you start ranking the items. And then you should be able to move them around. And then you're going to drag up your.
You may have to refresh the page if you got there a little early.
Yeah, if you got to the prioritization a little early, you may have to hit refresh. We have to minimize to kind of go back and forth with the PowerPoints. The ones, we'll be uploading this online on Monday. It should have all the PowerPoints inserted in, however, it was really large and we couldn't get it to work, so I had to separate the two. And so. And so, and so some of them aren't good together, but again, I'm going to separate them in just a little bit. So just bear with me. Give you some time, I know it's hard to rank, there's twelve items up there, so it is a lot. If you need help, raise your hand. Okay, let's see. We have water and sewer, streets, we have just staffing, equipment. Okay, just give you a little bit of, give us a little bit more time. And make sure you hit submit, please, after, after you rank your items, hit submit. Seeing like twenty-eight responses, just give you a little bit of time. I know it's a lot of information, if y'all need help, please raise your hand. These items help us set our budget for next year, so it's really, really important. Yes. So, no, it will be in the next upcoming slides, that's what I, yes. This is the, I had to, the system only let me put twelve together, and then I'm going to break them out in the next coming questions. Yeah, yes, absolutely. Yeah, so the next slide, it'll break it out. But I just kind of overall kind of see where everybody's at. All right, make sure you hit submit before you move on. Yeah, you might be stuck there, just hit submit, please, please hit submit. Yeah, well, we like using it, because you can see real-time results. And so, but it is problematic if you're not, you know, it takes me a while even to play with the system and put stuff up, and it does have limitations, like it won't let me do more than twelve, you know. All right, let's see, all right, I'm going to go ahead.
Unless they would better submit them, or they won't count.
So hit submit, I'm going to give you, I'm going to count to ten. I don't know if I can count to ten. Hit submit.
Tragic, because I'm like twenty-five percent.
Uh-oh, Daniel.
There you go. It's timed out. It's timed out, it's fine.
All right, all right, do you hit submit? All right, are we going to the next one? All right, prioritize the following without water and sewer. Because I knew water and sewer is going to be a top priority, so I wanted to see what it looks like without water and sewer. So again, it's, there's eleven on this one, we took out water and sewer, some are still grouped together, don't worry, they'll be separated as we move along through these questions. But I knew water and sewer was going to be a top one, so I wanted to see what followed water and sewer.
Well, I haven't charged to that, because I can't put it on there.
No, it's starting.
This is without water and sewer, so you're going to re-prioritize.
What's steeds?
Streets, oh, I'm sorry.
No, steeds.
I don't know, when I was typing, my finger did not hit the car. My apologies.
Oh.
Streets.
But yeah, I don't have.
Streets, not steeds.
I need the connector to this one.
But you could do this one.
Sometimes you forget I have a page.
It won't connect to me.
You want to spell it out.
Yeah. Fifty-three percent, I'm just worried that I might die.
Whichever you would like to write first. Again, once you are completed, please hit submit. So it should be everything but water and sewer. I'm going to try to get up to fifty-five, it looks like I've got twenty-three, please don't hit. Please hit submit. Again, if you need assistance, raise your hand. Okay. The next one, we're just going to rank the city infrastructure. Public works building, library annex, I did miss the options again, because I copied and pasted. Sidewalks, conference center restrooms, animal care facility, PD property room, equipment. Sidewalks, conference center restrooms, animal care facility, PD property room, equipment, and park restrooms. Again, you're gonna have to hit submit, there's nine on here. Please rank them. This is just the city infrastructure portion. And it is streets, not steets, my apologies again. So I have to copy and paste, I get mad at my own staff for doing that, I'm gonna put myself in time out. Uh, thank you.
Annexes.
It's the thin one. Yeah, it's a thin one.
Yes. Yeah, so what will end up happening is, I will hit save here, I will upload those results on the website. Um, and then we will do an online survey. The online survey, or the online questionnaire will be the.